And we call it the recording will not show the gallery, it will simply show the speakers and the screen. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Welcome back, everybody. We concluded our executive meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn the executive meeting and return to public session?
Motion.
Linda and a second, I see Xavier's hand. All in favor? Then can everybody stand? Are you doing your flag, Jim?
One second, let me share the screen.
And for pledge. And wait for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, one nation, and of God. Visible with liberty.
And justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. As usual, since we're on Zoom, we don't need to note emergency evacuation procedures or smoke-free rules. And that brings us to the Board of Education meeting minutes. It's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education. Oh, hold on, I'm on the wrong thing here. It's showing them. There we go. That the Board of Education approved minutes transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated January 11th, 2021. Do I have a motion, please?
Bill.
So from Xavier. All in favor? Then we have.
Just joined us, Christine, I'm sorry to keep you in the waiting room.
That's okay.
Didn't have that panel open, it is open now.
You have everybody?
Yes.
Okay, we have several FYIs. The agenda, budget appropriation reports, budget transfers, claims audit report, extracurricular quarterly reports, and the Huntington High School change order. And the revenue status report. Did you want to say name on any of those, Jim, or should we just?
No, there's a high volume of budget transfers this year primarily because we're trying to A, do what we are charged to do and B, just with the COVID expenses as they are. It's just required a lot of, a lot of movement and we're also working with aid receivable. We were just told that we are getting some of the aid that was initially withheld, so we are moving it back into codes that we took it from to start the year. So there is, in a year like this, going to be more movement among, between and among codes and individual cost centers. So that's why budget transfers are.
Do you want to mention about the roof contract or?
Let Kathy speak to that. And just be reminded, the claims audit reports are going to be, as they were last month, posted as an FYI. The essence of transparency every month. Kathy, you want to speak to the change order?
Yes, when, when we have a capital project that comes in under budget, we have a deduct change order and that money is able to be returned back to the Capital Reserve. It's a change order in the right direction.
And that was, and that was 10,000?
Yep.
Fantastic. Okay, anybody else have questions about any of those? All right, then we, the treasurer's report. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the December 2020 treasurer's report. Could I have a motion?
Linda.
And a second. From Kelly, all in favor? Hi. Okay, great. That brings us to the warrants. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on January 20th, 2021, and February 3rd, 2021. Good, I have a motion, please.
Michelle.
A motion from Michelle, second from Xavier, all in favor? That brings us to board member communications and announcements. Who has, Xavier, you must have something to tell us.
I do, you know, a little bit of bad news. We lost one of our legends, Mr. Coach Lugiani. Passed away since our last meeting and I don't want to get too much into it because I know that I will get emotional. He's somebody that was very important in everybody's life. Particularly mine, and I know that there are many men that he influenced tremendously. It's unfortunate that we had a COVID type of funeral because we couldn't all celebrate his life as he so rightfully deserves. So we mourn his loss, but we will forever celebrate his legacy.
Xavier, thank you for bringing that up. I think that it would be appropriate for us to take a moment just to remember him. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Go on, I know you have good news, too.
Yes, and after the celebration of life, 97 years exactly, Olga Smith, she was a principal at Washington is how I remember her. She was my principal. When I heard her voice, I was always scared mainly because I was a little mischievous. So as a board, we have put together a resolution in celebration of her many years of life and her contribution to our district. So I will read this on behalf of our board. Resolution, whereas Olga Smith served Huntington Union Free School District as a sixth grade teacher at Washington Elementary School from 1955 until 1965, as a teacher of social studies at J. Taylor Finley Jr. High School from 1965 to 1968, as an administrative assistant at J. Taylor Finley Jr. High School Elementary School from 1968 to 1969, and as a principal of J. Taylor Finley and Lincoln Schools from 1969 to 1971, and then finally, as a principal of Washington Elementary School from 1971 until her retirement in 1991. Whereas Olga Smith experienced in the United States Navy as a first-class specialist, cultivated her passion to serve and assist others. Whereas Olga Smith was a Washington favorite known for her outstanding service and enthusiasm as a school principal and her keen ability to know every family connected to her building. Whereas under her passionate leadership, Olga Smith created an environment that was ideal for both teaching and learning, forging positive and supportive relationships to ensure that all students received the quality education they deserved. Whereas throughout her tenure, Olga Smith served as an excellent example for her colleagues, teachers, and staff, inspiring them with their tireless advocacy in the best interest of all students. Now, therefore, Olga Smith and others can take pride in the tremendous impact she has had and in the legacy she has left, not only within the walls of her school, but also within the minds of students, parents, teachers, and alumni with whom she has associated. Being resolved, the Huntington School District is proud to honor Olga Smith in celebration of her 97th birthday and for the manner in which she enriched the district with her service, commitment, and compassion. Congratulations, Olga Smith, and thank you.
Thank you.
Beautifully done.
That's it for me.
Do you have any more news for us on your team or anything?
I can do that. My team, our team, the schools team, mock trial team, has recently beat Stony Brook Prep School, a formidable opponent. We have a very young crew of mock trial participants and they were just amazing. They really, really were amazing. The experience was one that it was fun to watch them win and I know that they enjoyed it. And we're looking forward to the next opponent, which is West Babylon. So the mock trial competition is ongoing and we are headed towards the county competition and hopefully we can bring Huntington a county championship, maybe a state championship. We're very optimistic with this team.
Fantastic.
And that's it for me.
Okay.
Well done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, to Mr. Plansky.
Try and consolidate here because some of this will be discussed during the core portion of the meeting. Testing vaccinations, I'll hold off on that. The executive budget proposal will be addressed tonight as well. Just, actually, just in today, for those that haven't seen it yet, the Regents, the New York State Education Department, the Board of Regents met today and they have appointed Betty Rosa as the permanent education commissioner. So she has lost her interim tag and she's now formally in the position. And they, I did watch for a couple of minutes today and the Regents are thrilled to have her and I'm hopeful that she's going to do some good things during her tenure. She already has. With respect to some of the other items that are going on up there, assessment accountability, the New York State Education Department, I believe I addressed this with, with the board recently, just sharing information. The waiver is going to be submitted to federal government as, as it is going to be submitted by several other states in terms of what happens with assessment. On Friday, the window for public comment closed. I'm not sure where I saw it today, but I believe I saw something that showed about 80% of the comments were promoting a hold not, not to administer the assessments this, for reasons of equity, for reasons of COVID in general, for reasons of achievement gaps that, that exist naturally in places that, at this point, there are districts that are not able to live stream, that are not able to do some of the things that we are fortunately able to do. And it's, it's a situation that really needs to be addressed as a comprehensive, but also in light of the variety of individuals and communities that exist across New York State. So I did hear that today, how that plays out. I'm sure they're still analyzing. Regardless of what happens with assessments, the near 100% response, I have to imagine, is a hold on the accountability process. This is not the year to use assessment data for purposes of evaluating teachers, evaluating administrators, evaluating schools. It makes no sense. So I am sure there is more that is going to be shared there. And exactly what the federal government, the new administration will do with waivers that are received remains to be seen. But I know New York is not alone in requesting a waiver of administering spring assessments as well as the accountability process. In other news related to assessments, somebody asked about advanced placement exams. I did hold a few parent forums that went very well. Advanced placement exams did come up. It looks like they are going to offer a number of administrations and offer an option to schools and possibly to individuals in terms of whether they take the exams online or in person. And it also looks like the SAT and ACT are going to be changed markedly and also seem to becoming less significant or less relevant as part of a college admissions process. And there has been a number of media sources as well as the College Board and ACT themselves that has highlighted some of the, the changes that they're making in terms of the optional essay coming out and the subject matter tests, the SAT subject matter tests are going to be a thing of the past. So it just, it just does look like that they are not as much in favor as part of the admission process that they, they used to be. Some other news, legislative programs are underway. Everything is being done virtually at this point, which makes it a little bit more challenging. Going to work with the PTA leaders to talk about some of the items that I think we need to propose and, and prompt our state education department and our state government to, to support. High-risk sports began last week. We had all of our high-risk sport participants test. It was a little hectic on the first day, but Mrs. McCarthy and Mr. Hoops and, and the coaches did a a nice job gathering everybody, sharing the information. And each week is going to be a little bit easier, but for those that are not in the know here, and I will touch on this a little bit in a little bit more detail as we get to the COVID updates, all of our high-risk sport athletes have to test weekly. And we do have a service available for them to do so on Thursdays. And they are probably scheduling those appointments that they haven't already as we speak. Our kindergarten registration postcards have gone out. Our UPK invitations will go out shortly as well. And it's just, it's been a busy time and busy is, is good, but it's, we are hopeful that at some point in the near future, we can transition from some of our virtual to more in-person. And that's something we can discuss a little further during the core part of the meeting. We had a nice thank you to Ms. Alamea and the guidance counselors. They ran a very nice alumni day program. On the 28th, we had about 15 participants, 15 alums sharing their experiences in, in college and in, in the service. And obviously, under the current circumstances, our kids were very interested to hear about some of their experiences. We had student athletes, we had students in ROTC, we had students in various programs, and I think they did a great job sharing their successes and the things that they've learned since they've left Huntington High School. I had the chance to watch both the National Honor Society and Social Studies Honor Society inductions. Job well done from both of those organizations. And the TRIM induction will actually be aired live this Thursday at 7:00 PM. Our VE program might as well highlight them because it is so well-earned. And I know hometown was featured on the, on the website today. I believe two of our VE programs have been recognized at, that well beyond the state level or certainly well beyond the local level. They're doing great things and they're, they're loving every minute of it. So thank you to Ms. Biagi, Ms. Tyree, and Mr. Cusack, and then all involved in that program, to the kids themselves. They are, they are taking it and running with it. And just a reminder, for those that are in need, we are running a full-fledged mid-winter recess meal program. Please, I, I think today was the deadline, but it's, it's important that if you need the pantry boxes, the meal ingredients, that, that you reach out and let us know. And weekend meals have been authorized as well. I did communicate that in my letter last week that we are trying to serve pretty much around the clock and to get everybody what they need. And I think I have covered it all. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to our first public commentary. As a reminder, only school district residents and staff members are permitted to address the board unless you've been specifically invited by the board to speak. Those who speak during the first public commentary are limited to three minutes and to the subject matters listed under items for discussion and action. There are 30 minutes allotted for the first public commentary. And if time remains, after all, who wish to have spoken on the items for discussion and action, you may speak on other topics. Also, as a reminder, please don't refer specifically to employees, personnel matters, or students specifically. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your electronic hand on Zoom and Mr. Plansky will unmute you. Please identify yourself as soon as you are unmuted by your name and your affiliation to the district.
If you choose to wait and have questions on some of the things that we discussed during the meeting, are you welcome to ask those questions or make your comments during the second public commentary as well?
So you're implying there are no hands raised, right?
Not at this point.
Okay, great. Then we can move to our first, oh, did you see, did someone say something?
No.
Okay, to our first item for discussion.
Quick look. Now I have the participant list up, we're fine.
Okay. So you're going to give us a COVID update?
Yeah, there's, there is nothing. I alluded to much of this during my announcements per se, but just a quick reminder, there's two, there's two points of focus at this point. There is the COVID testing. We do have our mobile testing unit onsite at Huntington High School on Thursday for our high-risk sport athletes and coaches. The decision. This varies throughout the state. But each, each, each section, which corresponds to at least one county, is, is doing this a little bit differently. Suffolk County, in response to the governor's announcement that high-risk sports could be held, made the decision to mandate weekly testing for high-risk sport athletes who are in much closer contact than a typical student in a school building would be. We're talking about basketball and wrestling in Huntington as the two high-risk sports that are on, that are on the docket as we speak. So Thursday is the day for testing. As we get into a routine, this is going to go very quickly. Coaches and student athletes must test weekly. On Fridays, staff here is able to test on a voluntary basis and it has, it has worked out quite well. Very few positives. Last Friday was a little bit of an exception as we had four people test positive. Two of them were not in and the other two were, and it required a bit of contact tracing. But that's why we have that here. So we can, in fact, there are adults that can be asymptomatic and test positive. And that's something that has to be responded to. And, and obviously, having the mobile unit here is, is a benefit in multiple respects. We are also looking at how we can serve our staff and our community at large in terms of vaccinations. We have two potential partners that have offered to work with us once they have the supply, once they have the product on hand. It has been a slow go. The governor continues to expand the list of folks who are eligible for vaccination without the supply increasing. So it's just made it increasingly challenging for those above 75 and for educators who have been on, on the, in the queue and on the waitlist for some time. I did speak to Diana Rich, I'm going to say minutes before executive session tonight. I did hear from, and it says, I have no control over how this works, but the county did reach out and it looks like we may have an opportunity to test folks in our special education department. So that is something that we are going to work on and hopefully that, not test up, to vaccinate. Hopefully, that's something that can actually take place over the February break. I have no choice of dates. This is something that came across. And if it does work, we'll have another chunk of our folks who are eligible and can take advantage of the vaccination program. As soon as the supply is on hand, I imagine that we will hear about it and we can get the rest of the folks in 1B who are interested vaccinated as quickly as possible. And then it'll expand from there, whereas we can possibly become a point of distribution for the community at large, which I'd like to offer for our community members from, from all corners, but particularly for those in, in at-risk situations with elderly family members, et cetera. So this, this is important to all, that all who are interested have the ability and the availability of getting this vaccine as soon as possible. It is one of the things that probably will make this shorter time period for us to get back to the, the quote-unquote normal. And I think that's really about all I have to add to what's already happening here. And the only other thing that, that did come up, and I will speak to the parent forums last week. A lot of questions about secondary students returning. And we are looking at this. We are following the metrics. We're looking at the numbers. We are speaking as, as school district communities, meaning I am speaking to my colleagues. Again, I spoke to Diana, Diana Rich, about a target date to bring back our integrated students, our special education students. And from there, we'll be watching and hopefully in, in the next few weeks, we can target dates for return of our secondary folks, our, our secondary students, either in staggered or full format. We, we do want these kids back in school. And it is obviously important for not just academic reasons, but for social and emotional reasons. So we are looking to establish those dates in the near future.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yep.
But we don't anticipate that if students were brought back, that we would eliminate a full virtual option, right?
The full virtual is going to be there for the duration of the year.
Jim, can I just make a quick comment regarding the pantry boxes? The form is active until 11:45 tonight. So if families want to go on and order a, a box full of ingredients for a week, week worth of meals, the form is active until 11:45 tonight.
And they can pick up on Friday the 12th, correct?
Yes. Yep.
All right, thank you. Sorry if I missed that.
No, I just wanted to give you the time when it expired.
Thank you. All right, so Christine, back, back to your question. I know the fully virtual option will remain intact. A lot of, I know a lot of parents are still interested in keeping the hybrid. You know, we're, we're going to look at this in the context of where the positivity rates are and what makes sense. So, you know, we're looking at everything and we look at this every day, twice a day, five times a day. It, it's, it's all consuming. But I just need everybody to understand that we want nothing more than to have all of our kids back in school. And we want nothing more than for those who don't feel comfortable with bringing their kids back to school to still have that, that fully remote option. It's the in-betweens that, that we're working on as we, as we formulate our plans. Hopefully, we're watching numbers stagnate a little bit on Long Island, but you know, today we're talking about celebrating a 5% because we were at 12.8% a couple of weeks ago. If you told us 5% in September, we would have locked everything down and thrown away the key. So it's, it's all relative and it's got to be put in perspective. But understand that we all want the same things. It's just a matter of being able to do it safely.
And we need to work out what, I'm obviously not telling you this, I'm saying it out loud, that, I'm not informing you of anything. We obviously need to keep thinking about, you know, that when, if, if people were back, if kids were back full-time, that you don't want to encourage people to be coming in when they might be a little under the weather or not sure if they've been exposed. And so not having an option, it's, it's a thing we obviously are continuing to wet.
Absolutely. And listen, we, we've had, we've had episodes. I do not believe we've had widespread transmission in our school buildings, but I cannot say that there hasn't been instances where it, it has jumped from one to another. I'm not a medical health professional. I can't determine exactly where something came from. Usually you can target it and we do contact trace and often find that there is, there is a source outside of the school, but sometimes it's, it's very difficult to, to target it specifically. And that really is a Department of Health function. Once, once they receive our contact tracing lists, which are comprehensive, but it is important that we don't, as school community members, push our kids into coming in if there's symptoms and same thing, you know, staff understands that if, if they're not feeling well, they have to stay home. Sometimes it's the flu, sometimes it's not COVID, but it can be. And we've got to take every necessary precaution because if somebody's in a place where they have contact with others and the mask is off and the distance is compromised and et cetera, et cetera, can lead to 20, 30 people being quarantined for at least 10 days. And that's the last thing we want. There's been enough interruption. When the kids are out, it interrupts their education. When the teachers are out, it interrupts everybody's education as well. When staff is out, it interrupts every process and in every building. So we're trying to keep this to a minimum. So full compliance here and then care taken not to do the wrong thing is important.
I have a quick question as well. It's, it may be what Christine just asked, but if you send them the secondary kids back full-time, just like you did for the sixth graders that just went back, they still will be able to dial in virtually, correct? If they are sick one day, as long as there's still a component of kids that are full virtual, they'll still have that access to stay home and zoom in, correct?
We will have to discuss whether this can be a day decision because it is, it is disconcerting, disconcerting in some respects. So we've talked about when, when the numbers allow. Now, right now, at the percentages we're at, we're still not, we're, we would be in a position to, to make decisions other than what you just discussed, Kelly, or just mentioned. But at some point, it may be, it, it may be helpful to say when these numbers hopefully are at a, at a low enough level as they were at the beginning of September, where you have an option to be in school, you have an option to be fully remote with a, with, with a target date where you can change that. But this, the flipping back and forth is disconcerting in a number of circumstances. So it's something we're considering actively within the context of the whole process here.
Okay.
We don't want to take choices away at, at this stage of the, of the pandemic, but at some point, it may make sense to.
I mean, I will say, I, I think it does ease parents' mind in keeping their kids home if they have a sniffle, knowing they're not going to be absent, they're not going to miss school.
And, and honestly, we don't necessarily want to take that away because if they have a sniffle and they bring it in, there's a problem, potential problem on our end.
Yeah, right.
I think this is an appropriate moment to thank the teacher, the staff, and the parents for the job they have been doing. Because if you've been following the news, there was a district on Long Island where a class got into some trouble, right? Where a lot of positive cases in one classroom. So thank you to everyone for being responsible.
It can spread, you know that. And I can't imagine that's the only district that happened in. And sometimes it can just be dumb luck that it happens. Bad luck, that is. But I, I can tell you, I have been, and I know Beth has been, in kindergarten classrooms. These kids don't know anything different. They just, they, they sit where they're supposed to sit. They keep their mask on. They listen, they do, they do what they're, they're asked to do so that they can gain from the things that are presented to them. I'm, I'm, I can speak for, for myself, but I know I'm really speaking for many others. Very proud of all these kids for, for just dealing with a difficult situation.
Yeah, that's a true credit to the kids and the teachers in the room. The adults.
Do we have an idea of, of what the attendance looks like? Like how?
So our attendance is now recorded based on presence. And it's not necessarily a, an in-person presence. It could be a virtual presence. Our attendance is actually very good. That does not necessarily reflect, as, as Kelly mentioned before, if a child is not well one morning and is a little under the weather and stays home and is remote present on the, on a day where, at elementary, I mean, they're, they're in every day, but a day where they, they typically be expected in, they are still marked present because they are engaged in the learning process throughout the day. So it does provide some flexibility. I have had communications come my way from parents indicating that, you know, maybe this is something we should consider for the future. You know, I, You know, I, I still want to remind parents that one of the biggest detriments to this process is that social, emotional piece. School is important. Academics are, are important. But the social aspect of school is not something that, that should be taken lightly. These kids learn how to be human beings and how to interact with each other. And, you know, I watch these, uh, the elementary teachers, certainly the ones I've observed. It's not just about, uh, basic mathematical operations and place values. It's interactions, how to respond to social cues, how to learn, how to collaborate. And it's a lot harder in a breakout room than it is in a classroom. I don't know, Beth, welcome to head. Anything that, that you've seen?
I, I also just, I, I think that nothing replaces that interaction in person with teachers, with students, and I think our teachers are doing a phenomenal job managing and teaching the kids in front of them well, as well as monitoring what's going on with students at home. I think the different age levels present different challenges. I think everyone has done a tremendous job. However, I do think that nothing replaces that in-person experience for students amongst each other, as well as with their teachers.
And the virtual experience is definitely different at the elementary level than it is at the high school level. Kids are very eager to be on screen, in most cases at the elementary level, and they are quite vocal. And sometimes it's not. Teenagers are a little bit different. 7:30 in the morning is tough. So it's, you know, obviously, we, we, we wanna, we wanna get back to whatever that new normal will be. But again, the smiling faces and just having them work together is, is a lot more complicated and a lot more challenging when you have kids that are not present. And that's, that's where this pandemic has, has I think done more of its significant damage.
I feel like since our last meeting, when we did mention it, uh, that there's rumblings and plans and brainstorming going on for extracurriculars and all that sort of thing as we approach some warmer weather and some.
Well, I, and, and on that, on that note, I'm glad you brought that up. I have spoken with both Mr. Cusack and Mrs. Rothel specifically because it's honestly, however you may feel about a high-risk sport at this point and students on the wrestling mat, it is very difficult for me to, obviously, if something can be done virtually, that is still the way to go. But if there is something that can be done better if students are present, we have kids wrestling. It's very difficult for me to say that this group and that group can't be socially distanced, appropriately masked, doing exactly what they would be doing in, in a more stationary manner. We're, we're prepared to make those accommodations. I do have proposals from Mr. Reynolds for a number of his groups. Um, and we're looking at, at some of the other activities that, that may be able to run in a more interactive fashion without the use of Zoom or Google Classroom. But obviously, we'll, we'll do our very best to make sure that every safety precaution is taken and, and nothing deemed unsafe will, will get by us. That, that goes without saying.
Well, I'm sure we all appreciate that. Any other questions from the board?
I'm gonna flip screens here for this next piece.
Did we say buckle up? It's our first bunch of presentations.
Been a while.
Are we ready? And, uh, Kelly, it's your first.
Very excited.
All right. I have made, Kathy and I have spoken at length. I am making a conscious effort to streamline this as, as best I can. This is a little bit different. What I'm going, going to, to throw out there tonight is our tax levy limit calculation and just a couple of tidbits on the executive budget proposal that have the propensity to impact us. So I'm gonna go through this quickly and I think that's the best way to go. And then if any of you have questions, feel free to, to pose them. Okay. I left this for Mrs. Rogan specifically because years, and she still had trouble with this. Tax levy and rate, obviously, it's the tax levy that's involved in the calculation. The rate is what you see on your tax bill. Tax levy is a dollar amount. Tax rate is a rate per 100, uh, per hundred of assessed valuation, which is different for everybody. Depends on the assessed valuation, the assessed value of your property.
I appreciate you leaving it in.
Didn't like when I went backwards. Doing it just because I can. All right. statutory guidelines. This is old news at this point. This tax cap, for lack of a better term, has been in place since 2012. The allowable levy growth factor is the amount exceeding the previous year's levy by the lesser of 2% plus exclusions or the inflation rate plus exclusions. This year is not a good one with respect to that, as the CPIU, the growth for calendar year 2020 is only 1.23%. Therefore, that's where we begin. So it's two consecutive years now we've been under 2% and actually you'll see that on the next slide. So in 1819 and 1920, we had the, the benefit of the 2% because the CPIU for the prior calendar year was above 2, at 2 or above. Last year and this year, under 2 for both years and a little bit more so for 21, 22 budgetary, budget development purposes. And you can see this graphically. Obviously, when the darker line diverges from the lighter line, that's where the CPI is greater than 2%. Anywhere it's below 2%, then the levy growth and the CPI match.
This is a new graph.
Okay, this is all old news. It's not really a 2% tax cap. There are districts, we, we do this very straightforwardly. There are other districts that, that do strange things with the capital tax levy, which we don't have. Uh, and again, what we're talking about here is not a cap on, on a bill, on an individual bill. It is simply on the total tax levy, the total amount of monies that we collect as part of our revenue for the school district. Okay, I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna go through this quickly, I promise, just to show you where we are here. There it is. So i- in essence, and to make this go quickly, and this is going to be posted, so everybody can, can look at it and analyze it more carefully. We start to determine our levy limit or the tax cap, quote unquote, for 21, 22 budgetary purposes. We start with what was approved by the voters last year. So if you look back at last year's budget, 112, 112 million, 350,000 was where we, where, where we landed. That is voter approved. Okay, next, the tax-based growth factor is determined by the Office of Real Property Tax Services. And this is a little bit lower than I expected it to be, relatively speaking. This is a factor that takes into account new construction in a school community, any newly taxable status of these existing properties. So if you add a swimming pool or a deck and your assessed value goes up, that may factor in positively here improvements to taxable properties. So all of that goes into this tax-based growth factor and is determined by the Office of Real Property Tax Services. And I know Bill questions that number every year. Where does it come from? Uh, but it is in fact given to us.
And wasn't it actually lower last year? Wasn't it like a 29 last year?
I, I think last year was 36.
Was it?
Yeah. It was the year before that, that it was below, uh, below this.
That was my incredulous year, correct?
Yes. Uh, but last year, if I'm not mistaken, I'd have to go back and double check. And I did look at it at some point. I think it was 1.0036. So multiplying that out, you end up with the adjusted value right below. Okay, then we take that adjusted value and we add in the 2020, 2021 pilots. These are pilots with which you are familiar. They are the two properties on East Second Street, Industrial Partners. Uh, and they're the pilots that, that we're going to take into account for, uh, for next year as well. So that number, even though it may be a little bit different now than it was when we established our levy limit last year, we use the same number that we used last year. You cannot, you cannot go backwards and retroactively adjust. Okay, then we take in into account any exclusions from the prior year. Uh, we don't really have a capital tax levy because we fund our capital projects through the reserve funding that we have amassed over the years. But we do have a reduction there that is our share of the BOC's, Western Suffolk BOC's capital tax levy. So that is prorated and that number is specific to Huntington. All right. So after the addition and subtraction, we have an adjusted prior year tax levy. And this is where we apply that 1.23% as a multiplier. And that leaves us with the 114,065, 866. All right. Then we go in the other direction for the next budget year, the upcoming budget year. We subtract the 21, 22 pilots, the same two piloted properties on East Second Street that were taken into account for the current year. But obviously, they change from year to year. Usually there is an increase and sometimes they disappear. In the past, we've had a small pilot included, and Kathy, jump in here, please, for Gateway Gardens. But is, is that in litigation at the moment?
Yes, it's been in litigation for two years now. We haven't received a payment in three years. So as long as they're in litigation, we don't receive a payment.
And it would not have been a large amount regardless.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, for this community, it's, it's a relatively small percentage of pilots. There are districts upstate that are hit with huge pilot numbers that can impact their calculations in a much more significant manner than it does for us. Okay, next, we get to the carryover, which is added back in. And the reason we have carryover is because a budget was adopted last year at a level that was lower than allowable. So the board made a decision not to go to the limit to adopt the budget that was actually below the limit by that amount, and the voters approved that budget as well. So not every district will have this. If you approve a budget that is at the limit, obviously, if you're above the limit, you need a, a super majority. Uh, but that is the difference between the limit and where we adopted in 2020, 21, the current school year. Then we go ahead and add in any current year exclusions, and we have a capital tax levy estimate there. Uh, the others do not apply, uh, just for good measure, ERS. It looks like that is going to increase from 14.6% to 16.2%. So that is a significant increase, but it is not greater than two percentage points. So there is no adjustment there in our favor. And TRS looks like it's going up from 9.53 in the current year to 9.80% in 20, 21, 22. So neither one of those retirement system contribution rate increases are going to be greater than two percentage points, hence the zeros. And the capital tax levy, as I mentioned, that is also estimated, that's Huntington's share of Western Suffolk BOC's capital tax levy. So at the end of the day, we are looking at a tax levy at the limit of 114, 433, 838, an increase of 1.85% when you factor in everything. Most of that is a function of the carryover from the prior year. The board does not have to adopt at that level. But that is the level that reflects our tax levy, exactly at the tax levy limit. And that is 2.083 million above the tax levy for 21, 22. That is not a budget number. That is a tax levy number. Uh, recall that our tax levy as of, of the current year is 83% of our revenue. Uh, so we had 100, about 136 million, just short of $136 million budget for the current year. Tax levy covers about 83% of that. The majority of the remainder comes from state aid and miscellaneous revenues, primarily state aid. So state aid, while significant, is not as significant for us as it is for districts that have a much lower combined wealth ratio. Uh, but that's still, it's still, you're talking about a difference between 114 and 136. That's still a, a significant sum of money that's coming from alternate revenue sources. And again, primarily state aid.
So Jim, one of the nice things about having these meetings in this format is I can go back and check the last year's numbers. And you are correct. It was 36 last year and the incredulous year was a 13.
Yeah, that, that's the one you weren't particularly fond of. And yes, we, I, I won't detail that conversation, but sometimes I can't explain, you know, the ups and downs. You think based on some of the construction that takes place within school district boundaries that it should be higher. I don't know if there's a delay and neither the IDA nor the town has been able to explain it. So unfortunately, the Office of Real Property Tax Services gives us this number and I can argue till I'm blue in the face, they're not.
Right.
Okay. So again, board options, propose a levy at or below. We just saw at, that's a simple majority vote and based on tax law that guides this, if you go above that, which is not something that is going to be done lightly by any school district at this point, it would require a 60% super majority approval. And under the current financial circumstances, that's going to be a difficult sell in any district.
Have we heard a definite format for, for the budget vote?
Well, we are, we, we are anticipating that it will be in person. It will still be an, an option for absentee ballots, but exactly what qualifies one for an absentee ballot? I'm sure there is going to be further guidance, but I do not anticipate that this is going to be a full-fledged absentee ballot vote as it was last spring. Not easy for anyone.
No, it was not.
All right, just a, a little bit about the executive budget proposal. So a, a lot of what we start with is not final, but the governor, on January 19th, I believe was his deadline for releasing the executive budget proposal, and it does include state aid runs by district. This gives you a sense of some of the things that are different, or at least included in this year's executive budget proposal. Some of it can be a little bit misleading if you don't see what's going on behind the, behind the numbers and behind the scenes. So really quickly, 7.1% increase total education funding statewide. That includes a 2.72 billion increase in federal support. That's the second stimulus package that was approved, minus the package, the CARES Act funding that was approved for this year. Uh, so if you, if you do the math there, that, that's going to leave about 2.11 billion statewide. 607 million state funding. Now, again, that's, that's gonna impact different districts in different ways, and you're gonna see Huntington, Huntington numbers specifically in a minute. If somebody in the waiting room. This is the first time, and I'm gonna show you Huntington's state aid run in simplified format, but this is the first time that state funding has included or the state aid run shows STAR savings. That has not been something that really the districts have had any control over uh, outside of, you know, just what the, the state program, uh, the tax relief program looks like at the state level. But they are looking at, at possibly MOE requirements, how, how to, how to manipulate what's on the state aid run so that the state has a little bit more flexibility to maintenance of effort, MOE, uh, how, how the state can manipulate what they do so that it doesn't fall outside of their legal authority. 1.35 billion local district funding adjustment would be taken against STAR and not school aid. Doesn't look like it impacts, but it does look like that may provide the state with a little bit more legal flexibility, which often is not a good thing for individual school districts. Foundation aid itself, not going anywhere. It'll be at the same level, frozen for a second consecutive year, which would have been unheard of if we had had this conversation three years ago. And the governor again is attempting to consolidate 11 expense-based aid categories, which doesn't look like he would impact us significantly in 21, 22. It does impact other districts significantly, uh, but that has the propensity to do some significant cost damage moving forward. If you recall, and then the board has received information on this over the months that last year, when schools were closed, there has been questions as to whether or not, and this is, I think, what, what Xavier had asked about earlier, about aid that has been withheld because it doesn't qualify to transporting pupils, uh, because students weren't in school back in the spring, March thereafter. So it looks like this executive budget proposal does something to provide schools with that aid that was withheld because students weren't actively being transported. So it looks like this executive budget proposal does something to provide schools with that aid that was withheld because students weren't actively being transported. The prior year adjustment queue has been eliminated. How does that impact Huntington? As the board knows, and as I've shared with the community, in 2008, there was a specific capital cost, a capital project for which the state, we believe misplaced final cost reports, but at the end of the day, 10 years later, the state reclaimed $418,292 from the district that was supposed to have been returned. And now it looks like unless there is some additional federal support, we and a number of other districts across the state will not be able to recoup that funding. And interestingly, there are very few policy initiatives. Usually, state budget, you talk about money, but the governor throws things in that have nothing to do with money. He didn't do a lot of that this year. He addressed a little bit in terms of broadband access and other things that don't impact us directly. But interestingly, he didn't go very far with anything outside of the pure money discussion. Some concerns. So we're now looking at, and I'm going to show you this in Huntington form in a minute, but we are looking at a federal stimulus package. CARES Act 2021, supplemental stimulus 21, 22. Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm going to show this in a minute, but the CARES Act funding for Huntington was about $800,000?
This year.
For this year?
21, 22, yeah.
It's a little bit over two and a half million?
Exactly.
That's a one-shot funding package.
Yeah.
We use that to fund operations from 21, 22. What happens in 22, 23 if that funding package is not available? So this is not a Huntington phenomenon. This is a, every school district in New York State phenomenon. So what do we do in response to a potential fiscal cliff? I don't think they're going to let that happen, but I also can't say that for fact. The large overall increase, I mentioned that 7.1% and that 2.72 billion before statewide, that's not exactly being distributed equally regionally and also in the same region among districts. There are a lot of districts, and there was something, I saw it Newsday Online, it may be a weekend edition where it'll show in print, where there are a number of Long Island school districts. We are not one of them that are going to experience, under this proposal, significant decreases in state aid. I can tell you, a lot of my colleagues and the advocacy team up at the New York State Council of School Superintendents and New York State School Boards Association, they are looking at these funding adjustments as gap elimination adjustment under new names. So what's happening is the federal government is handing money to states to distribute to school districts, part of education funding. But instead of adding it to what the state would provide anyway, they're reducing aid in the same amount that they're adding federal monies. So that goes back to the fiscal cliff. If we get 2.5 billion in federal funding to replace on paper 2.5 million that they're taking away from us, well, what happens next year when the 2.5 million in federal stimulus funding is not there? Then we have a two and a half million hole, and that's a problem. I mentioned earlier, the cut against STAR property tax relief funding, that's where this money is technically on paper, the pandemic adjustments are being taken from. And I do think that provides the state with a little more legal flexibility, which is not necessarily a positive thing. And the expense-based aid category consolidation is also going to cost districts. And the transportation aid reimbursement has not made districts whole at this point. So this is what it looks like for Huntington. I can't, oops. Forgive me, going backwards, but if you look toward the bottom, you'll notice the, well, actually, look above the state subtotal. You'll see the pandemic adjustment in 2021, the 841, 518. That reduction in state aid for 2021 reflects the addition of CARES Act funding in the same amount. So if you look at the first, I'm sorry, the second and fourth columns above the state subtotal, notice that state pandemic, that pandemic adjustment. That's how the state is planning this. They are adding federal stimulus by at the same amount that they're reducing local aid distributed by the state. So instead of receiving additional money, we're receiving what we would have gotten anyway if state aid had been a hole.
They're basically viewing it as aid, the federal government is aiding the state, not the school, not the school.
That is absolutely correct. So the state government, and this is not what the federal government says you must do. The state is basically saying, okay, if we get this money, we're going to let it replace the aid that you would have received from us potentially anyway. And if you look below the subtotal there, the second, so the CARES Act restoration, notice that 841, 518 is gone. It's coming out altogether in 2021, 22. We have a new stimulus package that hits. That's the 2.5 million there. But notice that the reduction there is also reflected as a local funding adjustment above the state subtotals of the subheader there. The fact remains that the new stimulus package, same amount that we're getting, is also being taken away as if there is no additional assistance to a school district, but again, assisting a state in replacing the money that was taken. So the concern, again, we're not really getting 2.511 million. Subtract the 841, 518, because that's coming out altogether. So there's the fiscal cliff. You won't notice it in 21, 22, because you're getting 2.5 million as compared to losing 841,000. If at any point these federal packages stop and the process is not altered, we are going to hit, let's say, next year, we budget, we include that 2.5 million. If that federal package does not come in next year and nothing else is done to help, we're going to face a fiscal cliff in the amount of, I'll take the 2.5, subtract out the 841. We're going to be in a $1.7 million hole automatically.
Because we know, because we know that the state can't find that money to put it back.
I'm not saying we don't know that. I'm just saying that we see no evidence at this point of what's going to be done or what's not going to be done in 2020, 22, 23.
When I say we know, I meant based on our collective experience in this regard.
Well, I don't believe every state is doing this, where they're replacing dollar for dollar the federal assistance that's coming in. But my point here is at some point, something has to give, because school districts cannot sustain this type of loss in 22, 23, or any year after that. It's just not, it's not going to work, because I know budgets have gone up, and they've gone up considerably. There are cost of living increases that have to be addressed here, but that's a major concern. And we, as a school district, are not in as dire a strait as some other school districts that are experiencing. If you look at that bottom line number, and it's always misleading, that 4.6%, there are a lot of expense-based aids built in there, and what you don't see there, and again, I'm kind of summarizing here. I pulled a chunk from the state aid run here, and this is the easy-to-read version. But if you look at that second line, the services aid, that's where he'd be consolidating, and it's a lot harder to follow your expense-based aids when you can't see it line by line. Some of the things are pulled out, but there's a lot in there. There's textbook aid, there's high car, oh no, that's actually out, transportation. What else is in there, Kathy? Textbook aid, software?
Textbook software, transportation, OSCE's.
OSCE's is another big chunk of that. So there is a lot to be concerned about here, but primarily, it's that federal funding fiscal cliff that I think most people are concerned about. And they're not particularly happy with the services aid, the expense-based aid consolidation, category consolidation.
But also just funding what you've taken away doesn't acknowledge the fact, which is that both the CARES Act and the stimulus COVID Act were billed as partly to help school districts with additional expenses and issues that have come up during the pandemic, and this is not doing that.
No.
And I recognize that the state also had increased expenses, and, but, I mean, a share would be more appropriate, I would think.
It doesn't do that at all. And then you look at the foundation aid line right up top, which has been frozen for two years. That's typically where our discretionary funding comes in. And while there is flexibility with the federal stimulus monies, whether it be CARES Act or COVID-19 supplemental stimulus, there are strings attached to that. That has to be applied for, and Kathy knows this better than anyone, jumping through hoops for us to gather this money. We haven't even received the CARES Act money for this year yet.
No, we've applied for it, and there are very, there's so many restrictions on how it can be spent. So we're waiting for that money to flow.
Jim, I have a quick question. From 22, 23, you mentioned subtracting the 841 from the 20, 2.511. Is that because you're assuming we won't get the 2.5 million aid, and they would go back to the 841 roughly previously?
No, so let me go back to that, and I wish I could highlight this to a certain degree. Looking, start at the bottom line, go up to, look at the line that says federal CARES Act restoration. In 2021, we received 841,518 dollars in federal support. However, if you look three lines above that, you'll notice that the state, the governor, took that same amount away from our state aid package.
Yeah, I see that.
So it's a net, it's a net zero.
Yeah.
Federal monies, the federal monies covered what the state took away.
Yeah.
That same thing is happening in 21, 22. So if you look at the, right under the CARES Act, the federal COVID-19 supplemental stimulus, that is the second federal package that everyone is waiting for. Look two lines above, well, three or four lines above that. The state is removing the same amount, dollar for dollar, so it's an offset. There's no increase there. They're just offsetting what they would have provided if that federal stimulus didn't exist. But notice in 21, 22, the CARES Act money is gone. So in essence, while it looks like we're receiving 2.511 million in additional federal support, the 841, which we are taking it, or hopefully taking advantage of at some point this year, is no longer available and no longer adjusted for. So the actual increase in aid is more along the lines of, well, it's 2.511 million minus that 841, 518. So the net gain there is not as much as it would be if they had left that money in place. So the federal stimuli are one-shot deals. That's what they look like. So we look to 22, 23. If that 2.5 million is not available and there is no additional stimulus package, then we got a hole, we got a cliff. What replaces that? If the state comes back and says, well,
Yeah.
And I will also tell you that states were given the option of giving this money to their component municipal governments over time, as opposed to all in one year. So a cliff wouldn't necessarily be realized. We don't have that option. The state is saying, okay, here it is. You're all getting it 100% in year one, not that we don't need it, but by putting it all in that first year, you're creating the potential for a greater fiscal cliff in subsequent years, if that makes sense.
It does, yeah, thank you.
Because they're taking it away.
Yeah, and you don't notice the cliff created by the 841, 518 because of the second stimulus.
Yeah.
But unless there's a third stimulus package, what happens in 22, 23? And there may be. I don't know that, but right now, that's the key. We don't know that. So we're budgeting cautiously, in brief.
As always.
And we did not put out the budget postcard this year because of so many unknowns and uncertainties, but we are going to follow a similar process, organizing meetings by topic. Like I said, I'm going to try and streamline this and get to the point a little bit more quickly, but please, with that being said, I want you to hesitate to ask questions.
I have one more, Jim.
Yeah, please.
Would you anticipate that in 22, 23, our costs might go down a little bit to offset some of that potential cliff?
What type of cost are you referring to?
As it relates to, yeah, COVID costs.
Is it possible? Yes, but there are other costs that will increase, you know, so it's tough to predict. It's been a strange two years, because costs have not been exactly as we would have anticipated, primarily because of the COVID expenses. So there are things that we don't have to spend on, because we're in this situation. There are things that we do have to spend on in this situation. I had asked Kathy for a breakout of what we spent on COVID-related expenses. I wasn't planning on presenting it to you this evening, but if you have that handy, Kathy, I know she gave me a breakout, I think it was $800,000 in PPE alone.
Right. And then it was one point, I want to say roughly 6 million in technology.
Okay, so right.
That's 2.5 right there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Beat me to it.
And is the PP, that doesn't include the temperature scanners, right? Oh, it does. Dash shields, scanners.
All of that is included in PP, okay.
Now, devices, you know, I don't want to say that devices should be considered solely a COVID expense, because we replace devices every year. We have, and Kathy, you can speak to this, we have a rotating.
Good.
Well, each year, there's a chunk of devices that we would replace regardless, because we're a one-to-one district.
But the difference was, we were not one-to-one in primary.
Correct.
So we had to send, we had to get device, so we have to purchase more devices, because in the primaries, we do not have them carrying their devices back and forth.
Correct.
There's a set in the classroom for them, as well as they have a device pool, which we had never done before for K5. We're not one-to-one.
And that's.
That is.
Second device is K3.
Exactly. Yeah, four, six, bring them back and forth, but four and five didn't, weren't one-to-one. We made them one-to-one.
So we're budgeting with revenue unknowns here. You know, we do anticipate, we've heard over and over again that we're going to get our full package of aid this year, and there won't be any withholdings. But we won't know that, at least until the end of March. And then 21, 22, I'm sure the legislature is going to jump in here and have a discussion and possibly negate some of his more limiting proposals, but you know, this is tough to do in general, but certainly under the circumstances, there are a great deal of unknowns. We will get through this. I am confident. You know, we are not suggesting that we will not be able to fund operations. But it's, we've just got to be careful in how we allocate and how we plan this budget moving forward.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
This presentation is posted, so please, for all of you and anybody who's watching tonight, please don't hesitate to refer back to it and toss any questions our way if you have.
Just to begin.
Bear with me for a second as. Okay.
Okay, do you want me to introduce it first?
Sure. This one's easy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached chemical hygiene plan in accordance with OSHA 29 CFR 19, 10, 1921450, dot 1450, sorry. I have a motion, please.
Motion.
And a second from?
Kelly.
Kelly.
It includes a few minor changes, and it's not as if we didn't have a plan that we were following until this point. It was held up a little bit, because we are just starting with our new Director of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, who would typically be the point person for this, but our 2019, 20, and 2021 plans, we really revamped it wholeheartedly last year. So the two, last year and this year, are very similar.
Okay, did anyone have any questions about it? Did you have a chance to look through it?
It's not light reading.
No, I can't promise I read every single word, but I did read every single section.
Just so you can see what it looks like.
Okay. All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Everyone's favorite topic, next year's calendar. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached calendar for the 2021, 2022. for the 2021, 2022 school year. Have a motion, please?
Bill.
Bill, and a second from Xavier.
Bear with me for one second.
Wait for you to share it.
Got to flip screens here. Okay.
Interesting.
This was about as challenging a calendar as I have faced since, since I started here over 10 years ago. This is, this is a nightmare in numerous respects. I'll go through with you. We've made one adjustment here that we could not get around. But I mean, it's straightforward. In most places, September is painful, primarily because Labor Day, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur are in the beginning of September. It leads to a somewhat challenging start to the year. And the rest of it actually falls into place very, very easily, but the problem is just manipulating and trying to accomplish what we are setting out to do in terms of total number of days. So you recall a couple of years ago, when we settled the teachers contract, we are a district that is attached to 181 student days and three conference days. I tried in multiple ways to make that happen. And I got to the point where I had no choice but to make the same total, but 180 student days and three conference days. Two of which conference days, that is, are at the beginning of September. And the last of which.
November.
Is it? Two. November. There was some discussion and fortunately it did not come to fruition. I could probably take these four days off at this point, but the initial rating day was scheduled for June 23rd. So I was almost at the point where I'd have to go 179 plus four and make that June 24th date another conference day because you cannot hold school days after, student days after rating day. But fortunately, after much badgering, myself included, state education department came back and shifted the rating day to Friday, June 24th.
So where does that put graduation then?
It would be that Friday.
The Friday, the?
Twenty-four. And we haven't gone into event planning yet, but, and there are a couple of additional holidays, rightly so, in, in the calendar. Eid is in here on May 3rd. And Juneteenth, Juneteenth is now a recognized state holiday. It falls on a Sunday, which, which means we recognize and, and an honor on Monday, which is June 20th. So there won't be any Regents exams on that day. It will not be a student or staff day.
Great. Fantastic. That's good. Yeah, it's just the beginning that, that is different and then the rest.
And the holidays are becoming more numerous and that, depending on where they fall, just makes it challenging to, to schedule the days in. There's always a way, but sometimes you get creative.
But celebrating is good. Okay. Did anybody have any questions? Other questions about the calendar? No Super Bowl jokes? No. Giving discussion? Okay.
Well, I, you know, there was a former board member who
Yes, I know.
Many years ago for a, an off day, the day following the Super Bowl.
But we got it delayed.
We, well, the thing is, we said no, but ever since that, that fateful day, every day following the Super Bowl, it seems that there is some sort of weather event.
See, I, I am an advocate of having March 18th off, but.
You need to draw the line somewhere.
Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone. Then our next topic?
So anyone?
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the board of education approved the submission of an undue burden independent evaluator hardship waiver application to the state education department and authorize the superintendent of schools and the board president to execute such application on behalf of the district. Have a motion.
Linda.
Linda, and a second. Michelle, you're in my screen. Raise your hand. Michelle.
So this is no different than it has been in prior years. I am not sure exactly why this is still necessary, but it is. The deadline is this month. And, and honestly, I don't even know if this is going to be an issue depending on what the response is to the waiver request regarding assessments and accountability. But in the, for the time being, we do have to submit this. Basically what it says is we do not have to invite people from outside of the district to observe our teachers or principals at any point. It is a streamlined process this year. This waiver does have to be signed off by the board president, myself, the president of the teachers union and the president of the administrators union. And as indicated, I've had conversations with both, you know, both units. And as stated, this is just a carryover from the prior year. Whether it's necessary or not remains to be seen. It may not be, but we still need to submit.
Okay. Any questions on that? All in favor? Aye. That was everybody.
Thank you.
And that brings us to Ms. McCoy.
This is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the board of education approved CSE CPSC submissions as delineated.
Have a motion, please. Kelly, and a second. Linda, you're on my screen. Linda. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's everybody. Back to Mr. Polanski.
Thank you. I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules three, four, five, seven, eight, 10, 13, 16 and 22.
Okay. Good motion?
Bill.
Michelle.
Bill, and a second from Michelle. All in favor? Anything you need to say on that?
Couple of quick announcements. First of all, there is a resignation on the agenda that I'd like to highlight. It's for one, Mr. Brendan McGowan, a longtime English teacher and instructional coach at Finley Middle School. He also does his coaching at the high school. Congratulations to Brendan, who is going to be assuming his first administrative role in a Nassau County school district. So of course, we'd like to, to wish him well. Certainly know that he's well-prepared and has a great deal to offer. So once again, congratulations and best, best wishes to Brendan. Backfilling his position, we've had actually a Huntington High School graduate who's been doing a great job starting out for us at Finley Middle School. So we'd like to welcome Miss Hannah Pipolo into that position. That's the instructor, the teacher portion of Mr. McGowan's program. And we are also welcoming, and I do believe I saw him on earlier. I'm not looking at the whole screen right now, but joining us in the middle school science department, Mr. Andrew Marcy comes to us with many years of success under his belt in the New York City school system, and we are excited to bring him on here to take over the reins in the earth science and middle school science sector. So congratulations and welcome to Andrew. Anything I'm missing? And I think that is everything. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. That brings us to Dr. Eckler.
Hey, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the board of education approve items I through R on this evening's business agenda.
Did I have a motion?
Linda.
Linda, and a second.
Kelly.
Michelle.
I have Kelly. Okay. Anybody have questions on any of the business agenda?
I'm going to abstain as to I1 and only vote as to the rest of it.
Oh, so should we do it again?
All right. What are you doing to me here?
Sorry. You can probably do it, but if you feel more comfortable, we can just skip over I1.
Okay, so do I?
So.
So let me.
amend the motion, amend the motion to remove I1.
Okay, so.
And then just add I1?
And then vote on I1 separately.
Okay. All right. So amend the motion. That, that works. Yeah. So could I have a motion to amend the motion?
To. One. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Remove I1.
Remove I1. Bill, I see you raising your hand.
I said, Bill.
Okay, Bill. And a second.
Michelle.
Michelle. All in favor of amending the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. And. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the board of education.
Wait, I don't think we have to do that, right? We, I already amended it. So now we just vote on. Just vote on the amended motion because we already have a second, a first, a second and amendment. So, so now we are voting all those in favor of the amended motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody excepted, that's everybody including Xavier.
Yes.
Now we're going to do. Now you can, Kathy, now you can. Sorry.
I was so excited. This is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the board of education approved I1 on this evening's business agenda.
You say I1?
I didn't win though, so.
That, all right, a motion, please.
Bill.
And a second.
Linda.
From Linda. All in favor? I.
Aye.
Be everybody except Xavier who abstained.
We had a donation?
Yes, we did. Go for it.
Mr. Peter Kopinger is presenting a donation of 24 soccer balls to Southland Primary. This donation has an approximate value of one hundred and twenty dollars. Thank you, Mr. Kopinger.
Thank you so much. All right. That brings us to our second public commentary of the evening. The same rules apply as the first public commentary, except that you may speak on any rub, topic within the rules that you wish. Please raise your electronic hand. Anyone?
Yep, I got one. It's coming from the Ford family. Hang on. It should be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Chuck Ford, 89 graduate, three students that went through the district, two in the district now, a senior and a sophomore. First, Mr. Polanski, I'd like to thank you, Ms. McCarthy, Mr. Hoops, for getting the student athletes back for the high-risk winter season. Mentally, I think it's a plus for them to be playing sports and clubs and other activities right now. I think I missed earlier, did you establish a plan to go back to bringing the secondary school kids back to five days a week? I know multiple districts, I know we're separate and you do it on your own, but multiple districts around, I know we've gone back to five. And from what my kids have told me, they're in high school and, and they're averaging two to three, three to four kids in a class per day. I know, and I know I heard you say our attendance is very high, but in this day and age of charts and data and percentages, I would love to see the percentage of in-school students per, um, per building. Because I think that would be a good idea to see how we can get these kids back to school five days a week. As the CDC recommended, they'd like to see them back by April. But I hope we can get back sooner than that. Just my thoughts and thank you for all you're doing and everyone else does for the district.
I appreciate it, Chuck. The, we did have a conversation before. I will post a recording as soon as I can. We did not set target dates. I know the CDC is planning to release guidelines next week. I have no idea what's going to change based on what they put out in the past. There are some districts that have gone to full secondary return. Most have not. Some are planning. I'm going to, I can't, maybe many are planning at this point. We are looking at it as well. Again, we have not yet set target dates. We are looking at possibly returning our integrated special education students first and then looking down the road a few weeks to see what happens with positivity rates. One of the problems we face, and I, and I can't speak to individual classes. You know, some may have fours, some may have more than that. I know at the elementary level, when we did go back to five days, many people returned and the concern is the size of our classrooms at the high school. And everybody will need to understand that if we do this, we will, we, and I'm not saying we shouldn't. So please don't take this the wrong way, but understand that the six feet distance will no longer be attainable. So it could go down to half that. It could go down to a little bit more than half that, but that's one of our major concerns. Along with a quarantine, when students are in, we can avoid some of the major quarantine type situations. When you have fewer kids in the classroom, I don't think we did, we didn't discuss this piece of it before. But if we had, because the students are not self-contained like they are at an elementary level, there are concerns that if there is a positive take, the quarantines could be more than extensive. So these are all things that, that we're considering, but you know, I understand where you're coming from and we do want to bring those that wish to come back as soon as we possibly can. We just need to do it safely and have a, a firm plan in place. And a lot of it's in place already with our social distancing and, and desk shields and the daily cleanings and electrostatic hits that go on in that building every night. It's just, I think the, the, the rates need to come down a little bit more, but we are actively looking at this and I'm also consulting with, with my neighbors to just keep tabs on, on what they're doing, the size of their classrooms, et cetera, so that I can share that data as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Any final comments from board members then? Then can I have a motion to adjourn this public meeting and return to our executive session?
Motion.
No one wants to go there? Xavier. I'm sorry, a second from someone.
Lynn Kelly.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, everybody who came to the meeting and I'll see the rest of you in executive, although I guess we stay here and wait for everybody.
I'm going to log off of here and log on on a different device.
Okay.
We'll, we'll wait for you.
We'll try.
Is it just us or do we still have people here?
No, it's, it's going to take a couple of minutes. Actually, I think I can.
Stop the recording?
Almost there. Yes. I see that.
Good point.
Jim, who's the just left?
We're still recording.
There we go.